So you know kind of where we are in the agenda. Okay? Are they both here? Is both?
Yes.
Okay. You can talk among yourselves for a minute.
Mayor, we're gonna need to do two, two things on the agenda if you want.
Well, let's, let's wait till...
Just so you know what we're, what we need to do so we can say that. Um, under item eight A, when it comes time to approve the agenda, I'm gonna ask that you remove that item. We'll, we'll pick that up at the next meeting. And then, under item eleven, new business.
Mm-hmm.
There doesn't need to be any change to the language of these, but item C needs to be labeled item B. And item B needs to be labeled item C. Those need to be reversed. That, that's an oversight on my part. There's procedural. Um, those are, those have to run in a, in a certain order.
So we just need to reverse those two?
That's correct. So item C will become B.
Vice Mayor, are you hearing that? Okay, C is B.
And B is C.
And B is C. And strike, strike what?
Eight A.
Eight.
Thank, thank you.
I'm sorry, was there more?
No, I, I was just interrupted when I said, "Thank you."
Oh. At 7:11, we are called to order. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Present.
Commissioner Butler.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
Mayor Rainey.
Present.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, will you do our prayer and pledge, please?
Please stand. Taylor, we just thank you for this evening. We ask that you be with us tonight as we make decisions for the better of our community. We ask that you be with each member of our community. God bless them, be with them, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, approval of agenda.
Mayor, make a motion to add resolution 11H on new business for fence design for the playground.
Mayor, in addition to that, I would request, per the city manager, to remove eight A. And on eleven, B and C, those two items need to be reversed.
Do I hear a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Johnson, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Public hearings? There are none tonight. Citizen comments, Ms. But, Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Gary Darnell.
Mr. Darnell, you'll have three minutes.
I'll try to talk fast, Madam Mayor.
Well, if you don't, Mr. Richard will shut you up when three minutes are out.
My name is Gary Darnell, and I reside at 7208 Grammar Drive. Kathy, my wife, and I have lived in the Fairview community for a little over 25 years. As some of you know, I am the executive director of the View Community Resource Coalition. On August 27th, I tested positive for the COVID virus and a week later spent seven days in the East Tower on the eighth floor at Vanderbilt. During those days, I met a lot of caring, kind, and dedicated people. One of those was Isabella, whose grandfather served in our Navy and brought the family to the United States for a better life from their home country, the Philippines. Isabella shared that three weeks before we met, that her father, who was in the Philippines at the time, had died from COVID. The lack of good medical services, and especially oxygen, Isabella had to watch and say goodbye to her father from a small monitor thousand miles away. But a woman of strong faith, her attention to details, and encouraging words made a difference as she prayed for my healing. That first night, they were giving me a lot of oxygen. And I remember this nurse coming in, you know, the one that has the flyer decap and takes charge of the situation. While having difficult breathing, she looked at me through those dark, wide-rimmed glasses and said, "Smell the roses, blow out the candles. Smell the roses, blow out the candles." There were many who looked after me over those seven days, working extra hours, some having to make decisions to pay the rent or put gas in the car to get to work. When I asked this one young lady why she wanted to be a nurse, she quickly answered, "I just want to help people." Madam Mayor, I'd like to pause and bow and have a moment of silence remembering the healthcare workers. Let's bow. Thank you. At this time, I have a few people I'd like to recognize who were very instrumental in developing our preparatory system that allows the View CRC to assist neighbors in our community.
I'm so sorry. You can come back next time.
Well, I had a presentation that was very important to me and a lot of other people on our board. And, um... But that's okay.
You're welcome to come back. Item seven, is there anyone else? I'm sorry. Okay. Item seven, Fairview Elementary School. I had the privilege to go to Fairview Elementary and hear from two of the students about their list of things that would make Fairview prettier. So if both those girls would come forward and tell us your list, and Mr. Potter, could they use your microphone, because I don't think they can be seen over the podium?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And tell us your name.
Julia.
Okay. Julia, tell us your list.
Don't litter, plant flowers and trees, pick up trash, help pets that are lost or sick, make decorat- make decorations to put in parks or fields, make some clothes and sell them, put, paint old buildings, put out trash cans, add more lighting to the street or sidewalk, put recycling cans out.
Thank you so much. And if you'll come right up here and stand. Okay.
My name is Colby Bolinger. Plant a fenced garden at Buoy Nature Park, have a dog park, make a community garden, make a greenway through town so people can walk instead of drag to schools and shops. Edible food forest, put the power lines underground, help people fix their houses outsides, well, outside, have a local aquarium, make a museum for all the different flowers and plants, park, have a park with water features like fountains spray from ground, waterfall that kids can enjoy or anyone can enjoy.
Okay. If you'll come up here, too. So I have you both, this is for you. Julia, this one's for you. And if their parents would like to make pictures, we will give you a second to do that. Did you get them? Thank you, ladies. Thank you very much. You were very brave to come up and talk to us. Thank you for bringing them tonight. They were both very brave to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you, girls. You can go back with your parents now. Thank you. Seven B, city events.
Good evening. This past weekend, the city of Fairview had the craft fair, and we had over 40 vendors that showed up. It was a beautiful day. A lot of people came out and supported local vendors, um, local food vendors, and it was just a great day to do some holiday shopping, enjoy the park. And Keith, if you can go to the next slide. Later on that evening, we transitioned to the movie in the park where we showed the movie Cars, and firefighter Chad Hara brought his racecar out for kids to enjoy. It was, it was a cold night, but it didn't, it didn't stop the kids to come out. And we would like to thank Chad Hara and the Police Department for serving concessions that night. All proceeds from the concession stand is, is going to help with the Shop With a Cop program. So if you'd like to donate to the Shop With a Cop program, please come by City Hall at any time. That helps needy kids in, in the city. And Keith, if you can go to the next slide. This is a new event for the park. It's called Holiday Wonders at Bowie Park. It's gonna start November the 26th, and it's gonna last through January the 9th, every Thursday through Sunday, 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And just to give you a little background on this, we had two different companies that reached out to us on this, and we chose a local company. And the company is ELS Nashville, and they are out of Fairview. And so Keith, if you can go to the next slide. In front of you, you'll see a diagram of each location of inside Bowie Park. As soon as you enter in Bowie Park, we're gonna transition that area into a Christmas holiday wonderland. And there's gonna be several light tunnels that you can drive through, snow machines in the trees where the snow is going to hit your vehicle, laser lights are gonna be shining through the snowflakes as well. And the best all is in the middle of the field where the horses currently are parking now, um, there's gonna be a 36-foot Christmas tree with a four-foot star on top. And you're gonna be able to turn, you're gonna be able to turn your radio station to a designated channel, and you're gonna be able to listen to the music that is choreographed with the lights. And on the backside of the park, or on the backside of loop, you're gonna be able to roll down your windows and actually feel the music coming through the car. And whenever you exit the event, we're transitioning and turning, turning in, turning the nature center into Santa's workshop, where kids are gonna be able to come inside, see Santa. Santa's coming from the North Pole to see everyone in Fairview. And Santa's gonna be handing out gifts for the kids, free of charge for, for inside Santa's village. Um, it's just gonna be a great, great time for everyone for the city of Fairview, along with surrounding, surrounding counties and cities.
And what's the cost?
Currently, the cost right now is $20 until November the 1st. After November the 1st, it goes up to $25. And you can purchase online, follow our social media page, and it'll, it'll link you to the current website. And you can also go on our website, um, city of Fairview website, and you can purchase tickets on there as well.
And that's per car?
Per car.
That's what I was saying, per car?
Yes, ma'am.
And back to Shop With a Cop real quick. Do we have a date on Shop With a Cop this year?
Yes, sir. I believe that is December the 11th.
And can you go online and donate to that?
To Shop With a Cop? No, ma'am, you cannot.
If I promise you that I'll give you $40, can you give us two tickets for the two little girls' family that just came up?
Yes, ma'am.
I can be trusted.
Yes, ma'am.
So, your families, so there'll be? See, see Richard?
If they can hold off until after the meeting, they can go and get the tickets tonight. And just to let you know, we, we do sell the tickets here at City Hall as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Is Shop With a Cop at Walmart?
Yes, ma'am. Shopping, Shop With a Cop is at Walmart.
And what time?
I believe it's from 7:00 AM until noon. And we're also gonna be, this is a little early yet, but we're going to turn in, um, an area of City Hall where people can bring in new toys for kids. That way, if we have any children in the community that cannot make Shop With a Cop, we can still provide them a Christmas.
Any other questions? Thank you. Staff comments and monthly reports? We have removed the planning report, financial report.
Mayor, I will run down the next three just quickly, because there's obviously a lot to go over, just to let you know. On the financial report, um, all of our, and I'll get, I'll email this out to you, the, the September report. Our revenues continue to be up. Our sales tax revenue continues to be up over last year. Through the first two months, through July and September, um, we were up about $60,000 over last year on our sales tax, which is good. Obviously, we're below budget on our expenditures. We're only two months in, um, but we started with no slowdown in our revenue, which is great for the city. That's a, that's a good number for us. So we are really excited about that. With, under the Public Works Department, just to let you know and the community know that in November, we will transition away from the chipper service and into, into the leaf pickup service. As you may recall, the last couple of years, rather than attempting to use the leaf vacuum, which is not intended, uh, for how it was used in the past, the city does provide biodegradable leaf bags. We run the same schedule for the leaf pickup as we do for the chipper service. It's on the city's website. We pick up on the first four Tuesdays of each month, um, by the same, by the same schedule and by the same map and route. If someone needs those leaf bags, they can contact the city. We will deliver them to, deliver those leaf bags to each resident. They can install those leaves in the bags. We will then come pick them up on those Tuesdays and make sure they're there. The purpose of that is to keep all that debris out of the city's right-of-way and out of the city's drainage ditches and drainage areas. In years past, we've encouraged, um, people to blow their leaves, other debris into, um, the drainage area or along the roadway. However, when those don't get picked up, because they routinely can't get picked up, then all we've done is present a matter where we have a hazard into our stormwater system, and we're trying to avoid that. So, um, that's why we provide the bags. It's been very successful for the last couple of years. We look forward to continuing that this year. And lastly, on our, on my city manager report, um, just as a follow-up from our work session, you have some important, important items on your agenda tonight as it relates to bond issue, debt service, and what we're looking to do, um, going forward. As we, as we mentioned earlier tonight, all of the discussions that you have before you affect and are funded by today's dollars, not future dollars. There's been a lot of work over the last few years to make sure we can provide a return on investment to our community, um, support our employees as best we can, and make sure that we are funding ourselves for capital projects in the future without, um, impeding future commissions, future staff, to be able to make those same investments. So as you move through your agenda tonight, um, I, I know you will be reminded, and I certainly would like to offer a reminder to the public, our staff, each of you, um, what we're doing tonight and considering tonight is a, a really exciting time for the city of Fairview and for everyone who lives here. Tonight is a major investment in the city. We didn't think we'd be able to see this a couple of years ago, but when you get ready to, um, look at what we're doing, there'll be a lot of, a lot of thanks, a lot of discussion. But everyone in this community deserves some thanks in that, because this is an effort where everyone in the community is making an investment. And lastly, as, as you transition from this meeting tonight, it's really easy in today's time to figure out where the negative lies. It's not hard to find negative somewhere, some way. It's nature, it is what it is. But I would encourage all of you, and I know you do, the public who's watching this, the public who's involved in our community, to take an extra minute when you're out and make an effort not to consider what you think is the negative in our community, but take an effort to look at what is the positive of our community. Because I can assure you, looking at the information we have tonight, the process, the progress that we made and where we are, there are a lot of communities in this country who'd like to be Fairview, Tennessee, tonight. So as you look around at what we're doing, you look at the work that will be done in the next two to three years regarding the work that, that we're going to approve tonight, hopefully move forward, um, we're in a position that a lot of people like to be in. So as you ride through the community, as you see things, as you observe things, positivity sells. You know, negativity doesn't sell anything. Positively sells a lot. We have a lot to sell here. So when you ride around, when you look, when you talk, when you're shopping in a convenience store, when you're at a school, when you're at somewhere else, everyone pays attention. Everyone has ears, everyone knows, and we are in a position to sell a community that a lot of other people will be able to sell. So on behalf of everyone involved in this, I just wanna thank you for what I hope will get done tonight, and we look forward to getting, um, an unbelievable amount of work done for our community. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Consider agenda? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Old business, there is none. Eleven, new business. Item A, Vice Mayor.
Resolution 32-21, a resolution of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, designating items and materials as surplus and authorizing their disposal.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Okay. Item C is now item B. Vice Mayor.
Resolution 34-21, initial bond resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $9,950,000 general obligation bond of the city of Fairview, Tennessee.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Move for approve?
Go ahead.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Item B is now actually C, so Vice Mayor.
Resolution 33-21, a resolution authorizing the execution, terms, issuance, sales, and payment of not to exceed $9,950,000 general obligation bond, series 2021B of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, and providing the details thereof. Move for approval?
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, you know, you know I'm a sucker for discussion, so I just feel like we had a lot of discussion tonight in our workshop about this, but it is unbelievable, the, the, the progress has been made over the last few years in the ability for us to structure something like this for capital improvements in our community. And the fact that we, our, our city staff has budgeted out for our debt services based off our current 2020 budget for the next 10 to 20 years is, is outstanding. I think that, um, they, like, you know, city manager Collins said, we cannot be more proud of, of what we're accomplishing and how exciting this is, and to start to see some of the, you know, the tax dollars and things go to work for our citizens out here.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, I'll just add to that. You know, financial security, uh, is truly everything. It decreases the stress. It makes you feel comfortable living in a community that can, uh, mind its own budget. And it certainly attracts more businesses and, uh, certainly more people to live here. So I wanna thank everybody that has been involved with this budget in making sure that we are secure financially.
And as I said during the workshop, a few years ago, we were not here. So for us to be here in what seems to be a very short length of time is really a, a great thing. And I'm very proud of the city employees, and as Mr. Collins says, everyone in the community, city staff, I mean, you've all done a great job. And I tell everyone that will listen to me that Mr. Collins is so stingy that I always feel like I need to provide my own ink before I write on anything. So, um, thank you. Any other discussion?
Mayor?
Yes?
I just think it's really exciting that our dollars, um, our community's gonna be able to see all the road improvements. That's what's exciting to me, 'cause I hear about that every day, road improvements, and this is so exciting that we're gonna start seeing our dollars go to improving the roads. And, you know, just a visual of where that money that's come in is gonna, you know, benefit everyone.
And the playground.
And the playground.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Hearing no other discussion. Ms. Johnson?
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Mayor An, Mayor, excuse me, Mayor Rainey.
Aye. New business, item D. Vice Mayor.
CT-0253, report on debt obligation for 2021A series debt restructure. Move for approval?
Mr. Collins?
I apologize. Mayor, there's no, um, there's no actually taken on this. This is, um, this form is a formally acknowledgement by the state. Every time we issue debt, that they're, they have effectively approved that debt and got that document back to us. This is just simply a public acknowledgement that we have received that form, and the 2021A bond issue is formally complete.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Item E, resolution 35-21, Vice Mayor.
A resolution of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, to appoint members to the park operational plan committee.
Mr. Dawson, I bet that's you.
It is.
Okay. Do you wanna?
Motion to approve?
You're on. Did you wanna tell us something about it?
Do you wanna tell us?
During comments, yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Wow, what, what a great time for us to get together and talk about this creation of this committee that's, that's really gonna discuss and kind of map out, uh, what the parks will look like here in the city of Fairview. In, in this decision, uh, to pick who is gonna be on this team, you know, it's like, I remember in elementary when we were playing kickball, and you had all of your friends that had, you, you had to choose to be on your team. You know, some, some of your friends are gonna be left out. I did wanna just run through the numbers really quick of how many people actually applied. So we had 11 applications, um, 10 of those met the requirements. And the requirements, you must be a citizen in the city of Fairview. So you must be a taxpaying citizen in the city of Fairview. And you must not have been a member of any organization that works on behalf or consistently sponsors any park in the city of Fairview. We did that to kind of get more people included in some of these decisions and kind of reach out. We were gonna choose two people that had lived here in the city of Fairview from one to five years, two people that lived in the city from six to 11 years, and then two people that lived here 12 and above. So, um, we, we chose those applicants. Five of the applicants, uh, actually lived here from one to five years. Three of the applicants lived here from six to 11, and three applicants lived here 12 and above. So, pretty tight. Like I said, uh, would love to have had everybody on this, uh, committee, but we, we had to keep it to, to those numbers. So, um, thank you so much for everybody that applied for these positions. We have this, this committee of six, uh, but we are going to be utilizing everybody in the city. We're gonna be using many of the groups, uh, that have been, um, consistently sponsoring or a part of many of these parks, and we're going to be using the community to help us map out what these parks will look like in the future. And if you'd like, I can actually read these names off?
Yes, please.
And these are the six that have been chosen for this group. Melinda Cherry, Luba Emily Sullivan, LaRonda Williams, Laura Minsel, Nathan Samuel Wood, and David Adams. Thank you very much.
We have a motion and a second on the floors. Any other discussion?
Commissioner Dawson, have you scheduled your first meeting yet?
Not yet.
No, I think this is very exciting, and, and Mr. Ross, all the events that have been happening at the park is an exciting time to see that park really come to life right now, and to get this, this group together and start this master plan is tremendous. So continue your push forward. Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Thank you, sir. Item F, resolution 36-21, Vice Mayor.
Resolution of the City of, sorry. A resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager to purchase equipment and to execute all purchase and installation-related documents or contracts necessary for the delivery and installation of the Treehouse Playground at Bowie Nature Park. Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson, will you call the row please?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Item G, resolution 37-21, Vice Mayor.
A resolution of the Fair, of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager to transfer up to $738,629.73 from the city's reserve account to the general fund operating account for the purchase, delivery, and installation of the Treehouse Playground at Bowie Nature Park, and to return those funds to the reserve account with proceeds from the series 2021B bond issue and from playground donations that are currently privately held.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, Mr. Collins?
Yes, Mayor, um, just quickly, just as I explained in the work session, this is, this is a backup plan to our backup plan to our original backup plan. There's no anticipation that these dollars are going to need to be removed from the reserve fund. As was discussed at the work session, once we order this playground and playground equipment, there's a delivery schedule that will take place. We also are in the process, as was approved tonight, of securing those bond issue dollars. We have sufficient dollars in our operating account to pay for the playground that was, that was just approved, out of our, again, out of our operating account, however, as a safeguard to that, in the event there was some community event, weather emergency or some other thing where we expend those dollars, we just want to make sure we do have the ability to fulfill any invoice of this size. Um, outside of that, we have the cash on hand that we could use, and if we receive bond dollars, then we'll just simply, we'll simply pay this, uh, those bond proceeds. We also have the ability to refund ourselves those bond proceeds. So let's say we, we use city dollars to pay this invoice in January, and we get bond proceeds in February, we can reimburse ourselves from those bond proceeds. So, this is simply a safeguard to fulfill an invoice should it arrive early.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Item H, the fence design plan. Mr. Butler?
Thank you, ma'am. I make a motion, um, to approve the decorative fence design that would include the ability to have engraved our names on the pickets, um, or the spindles, what, whatever you call them, um, to be sold with future consideration of how that will happen for the November 4th meeting to be discussed about how the funds will be collected. So just strictly the design or the look and the ability to be able to, to have, uh, names on them. And I know that was a long motion, I apologize, Ms. Johnson.
Is that good, Ms. Johnson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floors, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Communications from Mayor and Commissioners. I'm sorry, I'd written over my own note and couldn't see what I was reading. Commissioner Butler?
Thank you, Mayor, I, I kind of hit on earlier, but Mr. Ross, thank you for the continued effort of, of the events, it is, it is so exciting to see the, you know, the tents in the park and the people and, and the sales, and a real race car for moving night for cars, I mean, it was just unbelievable. So thank you for continuing to push on that, it's great to see it come into life. And, and what an exciting night for us tonight, I feel like, um, we just spent a lot of money, but it's all going to be very, very well received and improvements put into our community. So it's, thank you to the staff and for working so hard and, and getting us here and giving us the ability to, to review things like this.
The end.
The end, yes, ma'am, I apologize.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is just so exciting to see, um, every day in my shop, I can't tell you, the children who come in and ask, when are we going to have a playground? I have a big picture of it right on the wall, so everybody can see it. You know, our, our entire community has come together, um, and funded this, so in my opinion, this playground has been funded by our entire community. Um, I had a dream one night, and I saw this, um, entrance to this playground, and I saw this big ribbon, because as a photographer for our local newspaper, I've taken a lot of, um, pictures of rib, ribbon cutting ceremonies, and I just, I saw this ribbon that was stretched across this entrance, and I saw all these children with those little fiskar scissors with the, the rounded edges, and they were lined up, all of our children lined up along this ribbon, and they were cutting the ribbon at the same time to welcome the new playground into the park. And I just think that would be such a cool, you know, sight. Um, this has been a long time coming and a lot of hard work, the, the city, the, um, playground committee, the, uh, friends of the park, our community, everybody's come together and everyone has supported this, and everyone's excited about this. So, I'm just excited to see it all, you know, come to fruition. Um, also, the physical, um, financial stability in our, uh, city right now, um, I really appreciate, um, the staff and everyone who's putting forth such an effort to get us to this point, because we are, we are so desired right now. Um, you cannot believe how many people come into my shop who are new. I mean, I'm talking every day, a new family moving into our community and from all parts of the country, they want to be here in Fairview. Um, so just please be nice to these people and reach out and welcome them into our community, because they're excited to be here, and I'm excited to, you know, have the, have this, you know, new group of people in our community. Um, just, you know, thank you to everyone for putting in place, uh, our financial stability so that, you know, we are able to have, have a nice playground for our kids and have a desirable community for, you know, people to come live. Um, and just, as I always say, please help keep Fairview beautiful, pick up trash when you can, and please don't throw it out, we want this place to be as beautiful as everyone else sees it. Thank you.
Commissioner Dawson?
Spending a lot of money, um, spending a lot of money that we actually have, which, which is just amazing, right? You know, when I first came here about six years ago, um, I, I was worried, I, you know, and it, it didn't take too many Board of Commissioner meetings, sitting here and listening just about the financials of just thinking, man, where, where are we headed exactly? And within a very short period of time, um, the, the folks up here have been able to turn that around, it is just amazing to me. So I, I feel so much, uh, more comfortable as a citizen here in the city of Fairview, because when we have money, we can spend money, we can fix the roads. If, uh, we have to take down a, um, a playground that is not safe, we can build that playground back. When we first moved here, um, my son was five years old and loved to play in that playground. He's 11, but we're going to be building that playground back. Significant, you know, because we have the money that we can spend to do that. Big deal, big deal for us. Holiday season is coming up, man, what a big present that is going to be for the city of Fairview, to fix our roads, to, uh, be able to make payroll, all of these things that a city government is supposed to do. And Fairview is on the road to be able to do that for many, many, many years. So, just, uh, so excited to be a part of the city of Fairview. Thank you.
Mr. Lucas?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, just to echo what everybody else said tonight, um, very exciting night for the city of Fairview tonight, um, a playground completely funded, um, ready to hit the ground running with that. Our financials in the place that they're, they're in, um, you know, thinking back to, what, five years ago, I guess, um, right before I got elected, we were borrowing money basically to make payroll. Um, Tom was telling me earlier, I don't know if I'm supposed to repeat it or not, but he can yell at me later, I guess, don't repeat it. He didn't tell me. Uh, when he came here in, in 2013, there was about $300,000 in, in the bank for Fairview, for the entire city, in every account, 300,000. Um, today, we have a reserve account that's, uh, funded ahead of schedule. Fairview is in a great, great place, so to Fairview City staff, thank you very much. Um, not only as a, as a BOC member, but as a citizen of the city of Fairview, uh, with a family that lives here and loves this city, thank you for your work, we greatly appreciate it. That's all I have tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I agree with every word my fellow commissioners have said, it's, uh, it's an exciting time to be here, it's an honor to sit here in this chair, and, um, I appreciate everything that's happened here tonight. You're right, we're spending a lot of money, it makes me scared, but we've got it. I would also like to thank the two young girls who were brave enough to come forward and talk tonight. This is your first time at a government meeting, I bet, and I hope that, you know, 20 years from now, you'll be here. So, continue to take part and be involved. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And we are adjourned.